It all leads back to here.
Let's do it.
Did I sell my soul to the devil?
Put yourself together.
How could you possibly help me? Make it double.
Exactly.
Cause I don't give a fuck what you say. Yeah, I'mma do shit my way. So you can go kick rocks, I'mma stack bricks up, build what I want to make. Yo, I got a lot of shit to say, so I'mma do this every day. I'll be writing things until I'm fucking buried in my grave. Six feet deep wonder, but my body won't decay. Cause my messages are timeless, so they'll put them on display. Oh yeah, I rap with a certainty, I have a sense of urgency. A message for eternity for everyone internally. I had some people burden me, but now they fucking learn to see. I ain't the one to fuck with. Now they looking nervously and I don't really care what you think of me respectfully. You can kick rocks if you think you're fucking better, see? I will outwork you, turn you to an enemy. Hurt you so bad that you gonna need some therapy. I got the motherfucking recipe. I've been cooking up hits, I'mma leave a legacy. You'll be looking small when you standing right next to me. I'm five ten bitch, but I'm ten feet. Cause I don't give a fuck what you say. Yeah, I'mma do shit my way. So you can go kick rocks, I'mma stack bricks up, build what I want to make. Cause I don't give a fuck what you say. Yeah, I'mma do shit my way. So you can go kick rocks, I'mma stack bricks up, build what I want to make. Yeah, I'mma do it my way.
What's up everybody? So today we're going to be covering the Florida County Commissioners, regular meeting for Wakeyinn County, Walsenburg. Waiting on the Zoom meeting to get going here. Wakeyinn County. I haven't covered a Wakeyinn County board meeting in a while. Figure we'll do a check in, see how they're doing. Make sure we can hear everything. We're supposed to start at 10:00, so. Shouldn't have too long of a wait.
This meeting is being recorded. It is 10 o'clock and you will call this Commissioner meeting to order. Florida County Commissioners' regular meeting for August 22nd, 2023. You will please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Okay, here we go.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the back in the United States of America and to the Republic which is theirs. One nation, under God, individual, political, religious, just for all.
Thank you. First agenda item is the agenda approval.
Commissioners, I have no change to the agenda as presented.
Make motion to accept the agenda.
Second. Then call the vote.
Yes, you gotta tell me.
Call the vote.
Commissioner O'Driscoll.
Yes.
Commissioner's point.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Next item is the consent agenda.
Commissioners, Chief of Kyle Bowman. Pink sheets for Donald OT. These Austin Maddox, Dylan Maddox. Green sheet for Cameron Gonzalez. A pink sheet for Morgan Chetman. A change in position for Stuart Pinot and a green sheet for Tyler Martin.
Accept the consent agenda.
We have a motion and I'll second. And Carl, we please call for the vote.
Commissioner O'Driscoll.
Yes.
Commissioner's point. Motion passes.
Thank you. Fourth item on the agenda is public comment. Do we have anyone sent it for public comment? Thank you. Okay, for public comment, we have Ryan Geese. I'll try to speak up. Do you need, um, we have headphones also if you need it to be louder.
Sure.
Okay, let's put the meeting on hold for one moment. Two sets?
All set?
Can you hear better?
Can you hear better there? One good, one bad? Can you hear from the microphones?
Can you hear better now?
We have connection, good deal.
They say visions overrated.
So for public comment, we have Ryan Geese.
Good morning Commissioners, Administrator, Staff. Ryan Geese, County Resident. I just wanted to come and say thank you to the Road and Bridge Department. After the last meeting over the weekend, we had a really hard rainstorm up there on the top of 340 Bear Creek Road up there. And those guys were out at like 8:00 AM Monday morning, taking care of all of the washouts that happened. Okay, sorry. So yeah, I just wanted to say thank you to them. I mean, they do a great job maintaining those emergency access roads. I don't think they get enough credit, so thank you very much. Also, last meeting was a discussion of the budgets. And I was just curious where to go about requesting budget items. I would like to have, I'd like to request that maybe the bottom of 340, the first half mile of that, when it leaves Highway 160 right here is uphill climb that washboards really, really easily. They run the grader over it and maybe a week later, the gravel's washed out again. If there's any way to maybe include the budget to have like maybe the first half a mile or quarter mile of that resurfaced in some way that's a little more durable, as well as maybe like a couple hundred yards on either side of the stairway to nowhere. That's a hard turn right there that also I know it's hard to maintain because it's a very narrow, sharp turn right there. But if there's, I mean, I know there's, I don't know how to build roads, so I don't know what the solution is. But if there's some way to maybe address that proactively so that they can be easier maintained in the future or not maybe maintained as often. Because it really is those two sections of that road that just, the gravel moves off of it very quickly. And it's pretty debilitated into the cars that we see up there. So just a request moving forward with the budget and thank you for all the hard work.
Thank you. We are actively looking for gravel pits, so that will be an important part of maintaining the roads. But I believe they usually mag that section, so we'll reach out and see what's going on, but thank you. Do we have anyone online for public comment? Okay, hearing none, we will move to appointments.
Sandy Doleak.
Got to eat quick.
Hi, I'm Sandy Doleak and I'm discombobled today because I sent out the notice for the last Friday of the month, not the fourth Friday of the month. So Sister Carol is not here today, but she'll be here next time. And then Rusty, this our younger, and this is his family. He left for college, which is what we want to see with our kids. So he couldn't be here, so his family came. So I'm really, I'm really pleased. I'm sorry that Sister Carol's not here. My screw up. Think I've got too much going on maybe sometimes, but we'll catch up, we'll catch up. So. Rusty Majors is our younger this month, and I was real tickled to hear about him. Becky had first brought Rusty to my attention, and she'll tell you a little bit about Rusty kid.
Good morning. I've watched Rusty grow. He's a quiet young man. Some people like me may consider him shy. He is both of those things, but he is so much more. As I have watched him grow and had the opportunity to work alongside him, I have come to know an amazing young man. He's been an altar server at St. Mary's Church for eight or nine years, except during the COVID years. He helps train new servers. He also donates his time and talent to many jobs in the church, including yard care, setting up and taking down tables for events, working concessions, cleaning, and anything else that might come up. He even asks if he can do something more. He is so much fun to work with and he never complains. Rusty has been a member of 4H for eight years. He has done leather craft all eight years and several of his projects have been shown at the state fair. He also has done electricity and outdoor adventures. Rusty enjoys hiking, cooking, and playing Elden Ring, I don't have any idea what that is, on the computer that he built from parts. Rusty graduated from Colorado Connections Academy J School this year. He was selected as valedictorian for the class of 186 students across the state. His senior year, while taking honors classes and some college classes, he also worked at First Choice Market for 30 to 40 hours per week. He received the President Scholarship from Colorado State Pueblo. He plans to major in business management. I am confident he will be successful in whatever comes next. He's not able to be here today because his classes started yesterday. Wish I could be a little mouse in the corner watching him. But I'm sure his parents are very proud and will happen to receive this award for him today. Thank you.
Thank you.
He wasn't a kid on my radar screen. But when I heard about Rusty, I thought that kid should be on my radar. Got to meet him last week when I judged 4H and what. The most, he had a rabbit that he showed at the auction. All the kids were holding and loving their rabbits. His interaction with his rabbit, the gentleness, the kindness that he showed, the four-legged just spilled over to everything he's done for us two-legged. So I, I would have chosen him anyway because I just liked everything he did. So really appreciate you guys. Give Rusty our best. Go get him, boy. This is the major's family, so thanks very much. And Kathleen was a nerd, so I love her anyway. You know, I have priorities in my life. I thank you so much. And then Sister Carol, who had been here probably at seven o'clock. And when I talked to her, she called me and she just cried when she got the letter. She said, she said, I wasn't deserving of so many other people that are deserving, you know? And, you know, what have I done? I just do what I do. I would have to check my schedule because usually on Tuesdays, I drive people to Pueblo for medical appointments. You know, what a woman. I probably screwed up with the date because it screwed up in their letter. So anyway, we'll have her come next month and Carolyn Newman will be our honored elder next month. And then we won't do a younger next month, but I've got 50 retired educators that we're going to send out letters to and have, I don't think I'm going to invite them here, but we're going to have a reception over at the library forum. And this is all educators that are retired from Wakeyinn County. So if any of you want to come to that, I think it's going to be a really nice thing. And since it's September and back to school, we thought this was a good chance to honor that batch of elders. So thank you very much.
Do you have a date on that for the teachers?
The teacher will be the hard Tuesday in September. I just looked at the calendar.
And the time?
We'll come here and do Sister Carol and Carolyn Newman and then go over to the library. So let's, let's say 10:45. And any, if you want to come, I really appreciate it because I really think it's a neat change. We've got like 50 retired educators on the list and we're probably going to miss some. We're trying really hard. We're going to work on our list again this afternoon to make sure we have a thought of other people. So, and it's not only the educators, it's the Carol Borgo, so those that separate areas, school nurses, it's, you know, Lady Maldonado, Martha Maldonado from the Catholic education. So it's people that have been involved in the educating and, you know, the community. And Sister Carol too. So really, if you can think of, I think we've got a pretty good list, but there's somebody that you might think of that we might have left out. Please, please think about reaching out to us. Thanks again.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Yes, we would like a photo and would you like to be in it? Carl, would you like to be in the photo with us?
Come on up. I'm behind, Carl.
Okay, doesn't look like we have anything on the agenda for land use. We will move into action items.
All right, Commissioners, first half for you, Resolution Number 23-34. Resolution and warning Lynn Bouchard to the Wakeyinn County Building Authority Board for a term expired on December 31st, 2027.
Motion to accept the appointee Lynn Bouchard to the Wakeyinn County Building Authority Board.
Second. Call for the vote.
Commissioner O'Driscoll.
Yes.
Commissioner's point.
Yes.
Motion passes. Commissioners, next for your Resolution Number 23-35, motion accepting two general warranty deeds from Patel and Riochus LLC for the property known as the Riochus Inn.
Make a motion to accept the general warranty deeds from from Mr. Patel and Riochus Harris.
With a motion and I'll second. With that, we'll call for the vote.
Commissioner O'Driscoll.
Yes.
Commissioners, yes, motion passes. Commissioners, next I have for you two agreements, both American fidelity that you heard about last week. The first is my, my page real quick. The first is critical illness and the second is disability. These are master applications, they're, they're, they govern what American Fidelity offers our employees during open enrollment. And because of changes in state law, arguments with American Fidelity have to change.
So it's acceptance of the change.
Acceptance of the, of these new master applications.
Make a motion to accept the master applications for American Fidelity and
For critical illness and disability?
Correct.
And a motion and I'll second. Any discussion? Call for the vote.
Commissioner O'Driscoll.
Yes.
Commissioner's point. Motion passes. Commissioners, next I have for you an election IDA between the city of Walsenburg and Wakeyinn County. This is, this is for the election to be held on Tuesday, November 7th, 2023.
Make a motion to accept the election IDA for the November election.
That is between Wakeyinn County and city of Walsenburg. I have a motion and I'll make a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote.
Commissioner O'Driscoll.
Yes.
Commissioner's point.
Yes.
Motion passes. Next I have for you an IDA between the city and Wakeyinn County, between the county, sorry, and Wakeyinn County RE1 School District, also for the election to be held on Tuesday, November 7th, 2023.
Make a motion to accept the agreement, intergovernmental agreement for election services, November 7th, between the Wakeyinn County Clerk and the City of Walsenburg.
This is.
School district. RE1.
Wrong page. And RE1 School District.
And a motion and I'll second. Any discussion? Please call for the vote.
Commissioner O'Driscoll.
Yes.
Commissioners, yes, motion passes. And then last of this chain of election IDAs is the IDA between the county and Levita RE2 School District.
I make a motion to accept the RDA between RE2 School District and Wakeyinn County.
And a motion and I will second. Any discussion? Hearing none, call for the vote.
Commissioner O'Driscoll.
Yes.
Commissioners, yes, motion passes. Commissioners, next I have for you a per disorder number 138 for ALAMs. This is for a ALBAR and this for an ALBAR and a meeting hour for the community center meeting room. This will help us increase the capacity for virtual meetings. Allow us to host larger meetings better from that space. And this will be housed with Parks and Rec and stay down there permanently. Total amount is $2,999.
Make a motion to accept the pay the purchase order for the ALAMs, ALBAR and then total $2,999.
And a motion and I will second. Any discussion? Hearing none, call for the vote.
Commissioner O'Driscoll.
Yes.
Commissioner's point.
Yes.
Motion passes. Commissioners, next I have for you a per disorder number 140 for Penrose Steel and Tubing Incorporated. This is metal to build five cattle yards. Total amount $3,012.57.
Make a motion to approve the Penrose Steel and tubing purchase for the metal for $3,012.57.
And a motion and I'll second. Any discussion? Hearing none, call for the vote.
Commissioner O'Driscoll.
Yes.
Commissioners, yes, motion passes. Commissioners, next I have a request for a letter of support from Department of Human Services. This is being attributed by the Southeastern and Sanlones Valley Directors Association to HCPNF and Behavioral Health regarding the most recent idea to change our reasonable accountability entity region. I'm not going to pretend to know what any of that means, so. You guys.
Make a motion to accept the, or to sign the letters of port, support, excuse me, for the Sanlones Valley Directors Association to the HCPNF and Behavioral Health for the change in the RAE region, regional, reasonable accountability entity region.
I have a motion and I'll second. Any discussion? Hearing none, call for the vote.
Commissioner O'Driscoll.
Yes.
Commissioners, yes, motion passes. Commissioners, next I have for you a bulk water port, bulk water permit for Corey and Sarah Enders, lot 233. CLNG Ranch, Carlin and Raising. Actual permit is not in here. They have a cabin with a bird system to take for use in the cabin, so it's a residential use. Would like to approve that.
Make a motion to accept the Corey and Sarah Anders CLNG Ranch for their bulk water permit.
I have a motion and I'll second. Any discussion? Hearing none, call for the vote. Yes.
Commissioners, yes. Motion passes. Just going to quickly.
Yeah, make sure we get that permitted.
Yes.
Are you Corey and Sarah Enders?
No.
Okay.
So what does this water permit is it from Walsenburg?
You come up to the microphone.
You just have to come up to the mic so everyone can hear you. Okay.
I'm just curious.
I see.
That's two.
If you'll just come up and state your name at the microphone. Hi.
I'm Vicki Shagener. And I'm curious about the water permits. Is this from Walsenburg? Is it from Gardner?
These would be Gardner.
It would be Gardner. And to get a water permit, you should come.
You'd have to apply.
Yeah, you have to apply. You can go to our land use office and they will show you how to apply. They'll give you the application as long as it's a residential use. That's typically the main, the main thing. And if you're in the Gardner area, I think it's the zip code, you get, there's one rate, I think it's nine cents. You get, there's one rate, I think it's nine cents or four and a half cents. And if you're outside of that area, it's nine cents per gallon.
Thank you.
Commissioners, next on the agenda is a bulk water permit for Christopher Snyder located also in Gardner, they give the question number 31755. This is water for use while camping and otherwise recreating on the land. They use the property frequently. There are no structures on the property and no code violations currently on file.
Do they have a cistern on there? I didn't see a note on whether or not it had a cistern. How they're going to contain it.
It said while camping and recreating, so I'm not sure.
Commissioners, if I may.
Sure.
There's no cistern. They're just wanting to transport bulk water while they're camping. So it's probably just going to be like a cistern on the back of a truck.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, make a motion to accept that. Application for for a bulk water permit for Christopher Snyder on parcel number 31755 at Gardner.
I have a motion and I'll second. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote.
Commissioner.
Yes.
Commissioners.
Yes.
Motion passes. Commissioners, next I have a request for a water and sewer tap for GPID from James Trheel. This property is located in Gardner, sort of right around where the where the fire department is. So we don't get a lot of, we haven't gotten a book water, a water sewer permit in a long time, so there wasn't actually a form, so we developed one.
Thank you.
Yeah, the warning on that was really hard to read. Now make a motion to accept a for the water sewer permit for Sunny Acres, is it?
I'm sorry, I can't hear you, sir. It's my permit. I couldn't hear what you said.
I was making the motion to accept the permit for that for the water permit. Yeah, sorry, that's okay. For the water permit, is it Sunny Acres?
No, that's.
That was the one before.
Okay.
Okay, so I have.
It's hard to read this thing.
Sure. I have a motion to approve the request for GPID water sewer tap permit from James Trheel. And with that motion, I will second. Do I have any discussion?
So Commissioners, our fee schedule says you can have a five eighth meter, five inch tap. My understanding is that we don't keep those in stock, so it just know it might be a little while before we can get this installed because I don't know if we have the five eights tap size.
Well, the schedule has the option to purchase a half inch, but they said if you guys aren't doing that, it's $1,000 cheaper than five eight, so I because it's a very small lot and I've had home on an acre before with half inch tap and it's sufficient. So if you guys have half inch tap, when you say it's going to take a while, how long do you think?
I don't know. We have an estimate from from GPI.
We have a comment from Ryan if you want to come up. And the conversation is just regarding the tap size, three fours, five eights, one half.
Yeah, the state plumbing code requires a three quarter inch tap to a residence, so five eights and a half inch aren't legal taps here anymore, even though most of Walsburg is half inch tap, but they're not.
So the minimum is
Three quarter inch.
Three quarter.
What code is that?
State plumbing code. International Residential Code 2021. Yeah. Yeah, no, they're not on UPC, you're on IPC. I wish the UPC was great, but we don't have that. Yeah. So I can see code minimum is a three quarter inch and that's why there's no five eights. I mean, we haven't used a five eights pipe in decades. So half inch, three quarter. But that would be the minimum for for any residential, even a small cabin, if it was to need the plumbing code.
And I know that we have, our building department is on, so we'll have them. They need to make a note on the form.
It's harder for me because those rates go up. And I was, I mean, the advertised rate I was expecting was the half inch because that's what I had planned. I got half inch, I appreciate it. You know what I'm saying? I like to get an answer on that because it's, I mean, I wasn't aware that half inches isn't allowed, but the paperwork says you can buy a half, five eights, three quarters.
Commissioners.
We can hear you.
Okay, sorry, I was trying not to interrupt, but you don't really can see in there. But I did have a talk with Mr. Bashaver. What happened is it is in the resolution that you are, that you have in front of you that it is, that they can have a five eights. But after talking to Mr. Bashaver, he says that they need to go down to, they needed to have a minimum of three quarters and we need to change the resolution or amend the resolution. And we didn't have time to do that as quickly as Mr. Trheel wanted to get this application in.
Do you have that fee schedule in front of you? And I'm looking through my packet. I don't see it.
Um, yeah, I'll have to look it up. I have it too. Give me a minute and I'll find it.
And what was the, sir, do you know offhand what the difference in the fee schedule was?
I'm looking that up now.
Thank you. Well, we, I just want to start by saying this. We have not had a new request in a very long time, so much so we didn't have a form, so.
It took a while for us to get it going.
Sure.
Carl, would you be opposed to, or Carl Young, do you have any opposition to honoring that fee schedule until we can get it correct for this instance, until we can get it correctly?
Be well to do that for until we figure out.
Okay.
Which.
So we should probably amend that motion to approve this with the three quarter standard tap water line honoring the price of the five eights. Is that an acceptable motion?
Five eights cheaper than two quarters, so yeah.
So, so.
A little more than a half, but I'll accept that.
Sure.
I really appreciate that.
If that's acceptable.
That's acceptable.
And we'll, I'll ask staff to remember that so that if someone else applies for a tap between now, whenever we get these regulations updated, that will also carry on.
Absolutely.
Correct.
We're grateful to see growth in Gardner, so thank you.
Yeah.
Six four over that, I don't know how much growth that could provide. But I really appreciate it and can I get your card, mister, and then I'll, I'll deal with you. If you're not ready to do that, I'll give you a call.
Okay.
And your name is Carly Young, thank you, Mr. Young.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. So I have a motion and I will second the amended motion. And with that, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote.
Commissioner.
Yes.
Commissioners.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Commissioners, next I have for you a request from also from GPID to to approve a one year extension to the or one year renewal to the IMGIS software, GIS software that we use for GPID. The total amount is $1,000.
Page 11.
Start on page 71.
I stepped in the water, it's wonderful. Okay, make a motion to accept that when you're contracted with IAMGIS. Very yearly cost of $1,000.
Have a motion and I'll second. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote.
Commissioner.
Yes.
Commissioners.
Yes.
Motion passes. Commissioners, next I have for you, that's actually is a request to approve a contract for Art Martinez for utility position with arts and rec. It is an hourly position at 15 hours contract work. You help out with 611 Gym Project and other products that the county has upcoming where we need a set of hands. This runs through the end of the year and if you approve it in the budget, we'll, we'll budget this for next year as well.
Thank you.
Make a motion to approve that Art Martinez contract for the rest of the year for the position, art recreation and other sort of tasks.
I have a motion and I'll second. Any discussion? Hearing none, call for the vote.
Commissioner.
Yes.
Commissioners.
Yes.
Motion passes. And that is the end of acts now.
Thank you. On to staff reports. County Administrator.
Commissioners, just really briefly that staff has condemned the Knights Inn, the portion that burned on West Hall 60. Mainly because of that blowing debris. My understanding from the staff is that they have removed that roof, so that shouldn't be an issue anymore. And staff is working, actively working with them to to get that property fixed up or somehow resolve that issue permanently. They are working with the property owners, working with their insurance on the, on the matter, and that's part of, part of what's taking so long. So other than that, it's all hefty.
And the condemnation is for both the hotel that burned, but also the building next to it, same owner, same parcel?
I believe that's just for the portion that burned. Not 100% certain on that, but I believe just for portion of it.
But they removed the roofing material from the smaller building that was glowing.
Yes.
Thank you.
The condemnation, the condemnation was of the accessory that we found at the burn part. We didn't take action on where, or that's what has to be analyzed for the asbestos before they
But they.
Whatever, the bridge and mattresses and all that, land sale, building, eastern.
So just to restate that for people online, it's the accessory building, the land itself building that was condemned, not the building that actually burned. Because that one is, they're doing asbestos testing, other work on that building, so.
Thank you, Ryan. All right, we have a county attorney. Thank you. Any need for executive session today? Thank you. Moving on from staff reports to correspondence.
Commissioners, first up in correspondence, I have an invitation from Amity State University for East Orange University Breakfast Dinner on October 10th, 2023 at 5:00 PM. I have a update from CTSI on cybersecurity reminders, AI and phishing. I have 9C as your cap monthly reports. 9D is your, is another CTSI update. Personal appliances in the workplace. 9E is an invitation for an anniversary fiesta celebration for First National Bank Friday, December 15th from 11:00 AM to 2:00. Yeah. And item 9F is update number three, good report number three on the courthouse mystery project. I've given that project, we do expect that project to conclude later this fall. November, October, November.
Thank you.
That's in the correspondence.
And there will be no executive session, so I would, if there's nothing else, for the goodie order, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Before you adjourn, I do have one question.
Sure.
Could you explain a little more about Resolution 2335, the warranty deed, what that means between the property owner and the county?
Sure, so governments in Colorado can't just be donated land and just say, here, government, it's yours now. We have to actually accept it. Same thing with when we purchase land, we have to, we're supposed to do a resolution that, that, that accepts the purchase, accepts the donation. So this property, the property owner, Mr. Patel, was here in the courthouse conducting business one day. He went to my office and said, I want to donate the end to the county. So we looked at it, we worked with him, he signed over warranty deed, two general warranty deeds, because the property is actually two parcels. And the commissioners decided to accept it and move with him to get those deeds and have them recorded. You know, just to, I guess, to give you more background on it. They, they struggled through COVID. Mr. Patel was unwell right before COVID and wasn't really able to come down here as often. The property was essentially cleared out by people that they had watching it during, during that time. And a friend of theirs was passing by and saw that the, that state of the building and asked, called them and asked if they were doing renovations. And they discovered sooner after that their property had been essentially gutted. You know, they've owned the building since, let's see, the 90s, they're the second owner of that facility. They operated it up until COVID. And, you know, they, they decided to give it to the county because they want to see it go to something good for the community. So the county is extremely grateful for this donation and we're going to turn it into hopefully affordable housing and try to bring that property back to its home of glory, at least somewhere. I'm a commissioner, do you want to add anything to that?
Um, yeah, we're first steps, we just want to secure it and clean it. And then, as Carl said, we're looking for possible uses. Affordable housing seems to be a good option, but also maybe utilizing the restaurant and the pool for some, some type of community center for the county residents to enjoy. Very infant stages of the proposal, but excited to see what the future holds. We can get the great property. How many acres total?
I believe it's 23.
23 acres, great infrastructure. Of course, it has the tennis courts, the pool, the sauna area and the restaurant in addition to the rooms.
Yep.
All right, that's, that's sort of what I thought, but I, I was interested in what future plans might happen, so that answers that. And this is obviously the Rio Cancharis in on 160 West.
Yes. So a lot depends on grant funding and, and funding and planning, but we're just in the beginning stages to see what we can turn this facility into.
Yeah, my goal is to remove, alter the copy of this one. I think the first, the first real sign that the public will see, people who are passing by will see is that we are going to get it cleaned out and boarded up to protect it from further deterioration. So hopefully we'll be able to get something done next year.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, I will continue motion to adjourn. We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote.
Commissioner.
Yes.
Commissioners.
Yes.
Motion passes.
We are adjourned at 10:47. Thank you, everyone. Have a wonderful day. Thank you.
All right, guys. Appreciate you. Have a good day.